Okay, it is seven o'clock, time to call this meeting to order. And we stand to pledge allegiance.
We stand to divide the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry? Father, we ask you to be with us as we think, as we look at things that need to be done to help our community or help us to make wise judgments, good decisions, and go home happy and satisfied. We ask these things in the name of your son, our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Kingall?
Here.
Mr. Dumpy?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Oh, God.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? Any council discussion on said minutes?
Yes, um, the last sentence, I, I believe, should be reviewed in the final minutes. Thank you.
All right. Push to approve.
Second.
Mr. Kingall? Yes, Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sodden?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to interview and vote for the council member. Do you want to do that in executive or do you want to do it here?
Here.
Here? Okay, all right. All right, who's first? We have three candidates, Mr. Flowers, Mr. Brooks, and Mr. Taylor. Whoever would like to be first, please take the podium.
You can go ahead.
Sure. That's fine.
All right. Just tell us your address and where you're going to be council members, and we'll have some questions.
Sure. Corey Taylor, five five six Berry Street, Nelsonville, Ohio. I did put in the, fill the vacancy. I'm only seeking for, from now until the member, I'm not, I'm not going to be running in the, in the hall. But my intent is to try to help set councils back on the right path. Get a city manager in here that we can get under a contract, although regardless if it gets elected in the hall, we have some continuity. And I want to make sure that we're able to continue to get our projects done that we need to be. We have right now, we have a trash contract that's about to expire. We should be discussing it right now, and we're not. That's going to take some time. But, so I'd like to get involved and get that stuff going again. And I obviously have that experience with that, with those contracts. But that's all I'm seeking to do is just to right the ship and get things back on the right path and move forward.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Taylor, you had a position on council until January when you resigned.
I did.
Why did you resign?
That's the first time someone's asked me that, and I appreciate you asking because everybody's, you know, trying to make a bad thing like I resigned. I'm not the only one to resign. I think there's a lot of people.
I'm aware of that.
There's quite a few people that resigned.
Yes, we have a revolving door.
Yes, but I think the question is why, right?
Yes.
So why are people, why were people resigned?
Now, why did you resign in January?
I understand, I understand the question, but I'm just saying it's bigger than just me alone.
Yes, but right now I'm interested in why you resigned in January.
Okay. So I resigned because, and I was even quoted in the paper in my email, it's hard to, uh, it's hard to, you know, do your job when the system is rigged. So in my opinion, we have people that don't live in the city, that are not politicians in the city, that had more power and authority and control over our city and decisions that were being made in our city. And so it didn't matter, right? Some people said, well, you, you had more control over that when you were sitting on council. That's actually not true. I actually have more power here, sitting here as a citizen, than I do behind that desk. So the fact is, I have a greater voice here. Well, I resigned because of that. Because you've got people that are undermining the everyday authority of a city manager. You know, those are employees, those are people within the city, those are people outside of the city that have some authority within a county that are now putting pressure and power, you know? It's, it's all about game of power, and we don't need that here. All we need is to be able to check the boxes, get, you know, the infrastructure fixed, get the projects completed, so we can move forward. We don't need the politics.
But...
So I left, I left because of the collusion and the, and the corruption that was happening within the city from other politicians, along with some people on council that undermined a city manager that was actually doing a really good job. I know people didn't like him, they say, right? We got people that didn't care for him, but the reality is he was getting more done in that three-year period than any other city manager.
All right, but he's not here. He, he was forced to resign for various reasons. But you said you want to right the ship.
Yeah, well, he didn't have to.
If you had stayed on council...
It didn't have to be forced out.
Answer her question, sir.
If you had, you said... Excuse me?
Everybody's here.
I've got the floor here.
That's right.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
My question was, you said you want to right the ship.
Correct.
If you left the ship, what makes it even better for you to come back now? By staying and righting the ship?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I have a better opportunity, I think, right now to come back and right the ship. I didn't at that point. You could, it wa, I don't think that the ship could have been righted at that point. And, and I'm not the only one, obviously, you thought that, right? And other people resigned even after me, correct? So if that's the case, you know, I'm coming back because I actually think I have an opportunity to right that ship. Who wouldn't be your other one? I've never come here for power or anything other than trying to benefit the city. I've always been all in for ci, for the city. That's, that's the fact. You, my record proves that. We've gotten so much done in that timeframe. The reality is though, okay? We have folks on here that are not for the city, they're for themselves.
You're saying people on this council now?
I'm saying when I was on council.
But not now?
Not all the people, not all the same, the faces are the same.
I'm, I'm aware of that fact. But my question is, are there, are you saying people on council now are working against the good of the city?
I don't think necessarily now, I would say some yes. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say all of them, but I would say...
But some people on this council are not working for the good of the city. That's your opinion?
They didn't like it.
Do you have proof of her?
Well, I have public records requests that haven't been honored yet, but, but yeah.
All right.
There's evidence, and I, I've even said, don't believe in doing public records requests to verify.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So going forward, what could you bring to the city to help things forward?
Well, I think, um, you know, I definitely have the experience of working on such things as like the trash contract, which is a big, that's an important thing because we ran into issues with that in the past and it's cost the city money. You know, I think that I, you know, I could definitely help, uh, you know, with the process of interviewing candidates for the city manager and getting someone in there that's, I think, going to be best for the city. I mean, we have to think of the city as a whole. It's about 5,000 people in this community. It's not about the box, right? It's not about your, your friends. It's about serving everybody within this community. You know, we, I think that I've, we've done a pretty good job in the past of that, I think. So I think that we can, you know, I can definitely contribute to that as well. You know, it, it is tough. I mean, you have to have the skin to be on council. You know, you definitely have to do that because everybody seems to want to be against you or complain about it. It's good to see a lot of faces in the audience. It's whether or not they get involved and participate going forward, not just by voting, but also we've seen, you know, are available on boards and committees. We really could use some help. Those, those are supposed to be sounding boards or council members. So what I've also noticed is that council has not been following the procedures. So I can definitely can help get back to that. Because, you know, legislation is supposed to be going from, you know, committees before it gets brought to council. And so we need to get back to that. The work needs to be done in committee. We need to, that's where we need to encourage people to say, that's where the people's voices are the greatest. And we need to get that work done, and we need to bring it to the council at that point. Those are a few things. Those are the most important things right now that I see.
Anyone else?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
In the past 10 years, have you had any issues that could be brought up after you're put on council that would be against you?
I...
Have you had any issues with the court's systems?
I know where this goes. No, I actually have had any problems with the court system. If I had problems with the court systems, I think I'd be, you'd see a lot more public copy of that. But you don't. I mean, I'm very well at the Google search, so I'm sure that you've been pushed to, which is fine. But, you know, any issues that I've had with a former business of mine or any security licenses, it's not, because I didn't violate any law.
So what were you charged with?
I wasn't charged with any of that.
Excuse me, sir, you weren't charged.
I wasn't charged.
Order. Any more questions?
So...
Go ahead.
What have you done to repair your relationship with the fire department? Because you apparently have a vendetta there, and you publicly outstated in social medias and basically just saying, oh, Barge. So I gotta wonder about your, your agenda coming back into this council.
Okay, so I don't, I had a good relationship with our fire department for, I don't know, probably half the time. You know, he's been here for nine years, probably for at least five of those years, I've had a good relationship with him. Maybe six years. It was whenever Chuck Barge came into town is probably when it started going south, when the fire chiefs and Barge decided to commit funds for the city for future years without appropriation of council. And yes, this is pertaining to the command deal. So he nor Chuck Barge had the authority to do that. And so they, only council can appropriate future funds of municipal. He doesn't, Barge doesn't. The fire chief, you know, he puts all of that on to Chuck Barge. He said it raised red flags in a personal conversation with me, but then yet he said nothing because it benefited him. So to me, that's a, that's a, that's a big mis, misnomer. It's completely, you know, it's unethical, should never happen, should have... So in my opinion, I haven't done anything to try to repair my relationship with him. I think that he's not necessarily doing the best job that he potentially capable of doing. So, you know, that's... No, I don't have a brush. That's just... I'm just saying he's not... No, I, no, to be, to clarify, I would prefer clarity over agreement. I think he has the capacity to do much better than what he's actually doing. So I'm just saying, but we all do, right? We all should have, you know, room to improve. And if you don't believe that, then you're, you're probably a narcissist. I'm just saying.
Can I summarize, Mr. Taylor?
Order.
Can I summarize and make sure I'm understanding this correctly? You want to come back and right the ship because there are people on council who are working against the city? We're not doing things correctly in committees, and we need to get rid of the fire chief. Is that correct?
I didn't say that. You're putting words in my mouth.
Okay. Any more questions?
Yes, I have a question. Do you think compromising is a strength or a weakness? I think compromising is definitely a strength. I think being able to, you know, there's seven individuals that have a vote, right? So if you, you're not going to agree on everything. If you have the ability to compromise in, you know, a, a common goal, right? You at least have a common goal together. It doesn't really matter if you get there, you know, going right, right, left, left, right, to the direction you go. Sometimes it's a straight line, it doesn't always work that way. I think being able to compromise and make compromise as long as it's still for the benefit of the greater good within the community, absolutely. I think that's a great strength. I think being able to, to know what, uh... You know, people will say, you know, if you, you know, admit a weakness or, you know, or admit you're wrong on something, it's a weakness. I disagree with that too. I think it's complete strength if you have the ability to say, oh yeah, I made a mistake and own up to that and take responsibility. I think that's how we all move forward. Because a lot of times there'll be times where we'll be meeting, and not everybody's on the same page. And so, you know, you've got some people that are just going along, going with the flow. I think though, that to answer your question very clearly, I think compromising is a great... I think it's, it's definitely a strength that you have the ability and the fortitude to be able to look beyond your own ego and be able to say, we need this, this is what's best for the community, not what's best for me. You know, I think absolutely that's, that's a strength.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This is going to be a dawg. Okay.
My name is Johnny Flowers. I reside at 182 East Knell Street here in Nelsonville. Right beside McDonald's Drive-Thru. You've been there since... And I, uh, I don't know how to follow what I just heard.
Mr. Flowers, just tell us why would you like to be on council?
Not for that. Not for that. I, I, I think, I think that might be what's wrong with some of the people on council, what you just heard.
On cell phones?
No.
Oh.
Mr. Taylor just told you. I think that has a lot to do with the conflict that, that may be arising in the council. And I absolutely feel like that, that an attitude change could help council. In other words, you six are like a football team or a, a basketball team with two extra people, let's say. You're a team, and you're not separate, separated by, let's get these four people to vote with us so those three don't get what they want. That's not what this city's about, I don't think. I think this city's about, let's get seven people to vote on what's good for Nelsonville. I love this town, I really do. Stuart loves this town, I love this town. I moved back after twenty-two, twenty-two years in San Antonio, ten years in Adley. And as soon as I, things went south on my marriage, I came right back home. So this is where I want to be, and this is what I want to do. I want to help. Dan and I have done stuff for the city on our own, spent our own money. You know, doing, doing all kinds of things, trying to bring businesses into this city. And that's what I want to do if I'm on the city council. Which if I don't make this cut, I didn't make the last cut. If I don't make this cut, I'm still running into November. I'll have my permission outside, anybody could sign it. End question.
Well, I was going to ask you why you want on council.
I think I just said that, didn't I?
Yeah, you just kind of took that one right out.
Yeah. Well, you know, my soul gets out of the way. But it, it, it really is. It's, it's, it's not about Harry Barber or the police chief or... I, I think we've got a, a city manager, we had a city manager. There, everybody's talking about a city manager. I believe we had one of the smartest city managers for about, what, month and a half?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And I, I firmly, firmly believe that. And, and I, and I know a lot of you don't believe it, or some of you don't believe it, you know? But, but that's where I'm at. I, I think, I think this city could be run very efficiently with a very efficient city manager that's smart. And that maybe like I would be doing if I got on city council, learning as I go, as we say in military OJT, on the job training. You know, so, but, uh, can I answer anybody? Anybody of you guys got a question? No, go ahead. You have any other questions? All right?
Well, yeah, I do. Just to be fair, do you have any business or personal conflicts that could affect you serving on council?
Yeah.
Okay. Care to elaborate?
Well, everybody has personal conflicts. I don't have any personal conflicts with no one here, with you. I don't have any personal conflicts, I don't have any businesses, you know? And if you're referring to our Greyhound part, I'm so proud of that part. I'll, I'll attend it to the day and done.
All right. I'll ask you the same question. Do you think compromising is a strength or weakness?
No, I think compromising is definitely a strength. I think you should compromise, not compromise, like I would compromise to what I intend to try to do to help the city. I wouldn't compromise that. But if I saw a better way to do it, then I would compromise into that way a little easier.
Amen.
I think you have to have, you have to have a plan. I was in sales for quite a while, and, and the guy told me, you gotta, you got a plan, you work, and then work your plan. And, and that's what I think, if you come to a, a, an organization or a council like this, and you have some plans, then you work those plans. You might run into somebody that says, well, what if you do this with that? You say, okay, I'll add that to the plan. So that compromise, yes, but I don't think you should compromise, you know, your, uh, your plan for what you have in mind. Thank you to accomplish.
Well, John?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Mr. Flowers?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything in your background the past 10 years that could cause you an issue if you were on council?
No, I don't think so. I, I know. Not that I remember. I quit drinking six years ago, so four years prior to that. No, I don't think so.
I was told I had to be prepared.
You was very scared.
Yes, good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brooks?
Being hard to follow, young. My name is Stuart Brooks. I live at 123 East Columbus Street, Nelsonville, Ohio. I'm here, I'm here for the people of Nelsonville. And I'm here, I'm, I'm not here for any personal gain at all, whether it's in your business, that's owned, so on and so forth. I would tell you that I have a lot of respect for that gentleman right over there, Harry Barber, right off the bat. I've been to council many times, he comes out, he stays in his budget. He tells what he's going after in, in different categories, trying to get grant money for the city, which he does, he's at every function I've ever had. He does a wonderful job, I think, with his crew, he's well respected. I think he's maybe one of the best fire chiefs in all of Ohio. That's my belief, that gentleman right there. I don't know this young gentleman, I know his relation, Mr. Flowers, but I think he'll, he'll have a wonderful job for it. He's young, he's from this community, he knows some of the service we have. He wants, I believe, he wants this community to thrive, to be clean, and, and obey the law. So I think he's done a good job considering, but not a lot of leadership when you look at a city manager. I look back through the street department, and I will say with Jason, what I've met with Jason, saw his love for this city, is really, it's really intrigued me for what he's done, and to keep these people intact that he has working for him. I think he's got a great crew. But you know, we've been sitting here eight years, eight different managers. How would you like to try to work under that? Not knowing are we going to get fired? Are we being respected? What's going to happen in the city? I mean, that's not on for eight years. I don't know how I'd react with that many different type of bosses. People telling you what to do. So this has to stop immediately. Now, what I'm going to do is, I've never really done this, and quite frankly, I'm kind of proud of myself. I'll give you my resume and tell you why I think I should be on the city council.
That's a question I was going to ask.
It's going to take a little time. 1969, myself, Mike Nolan, and Rick Aremas, these are some names if people know. We went to Cleveland to see the CEO of CNO Railroad to try to get these tracks donated for the City Railroad. We drove up on our own dime, we went to see this gentleman, probably the finest office I've ever seen in my life. And to talk to him about giving these tracks to the city. He said to us, he said, you know, we're a public company, I just can't give things away. I have to go through a chain of command here. But he said, I know what you're talking about, let me see what we can do. But we come back down, I got a call from him, he actually had a daughter going to owe you. Now, this gentleman's so high up, he actually had, you know, guards around him. We just, uh, we went to the 12th floor, we went over to the right, had to go up to the 13th floor. That was his whole office on this. And he was, uh, he was the man. I met him in a lot over here. And Jerry Ballard, who started the City Railroad, a lot of people probably don't remember that name. He said, and I was, and he said, yes, I can get that done. We, we can give those tracks. That's how we got started with the City Railroad. And Mr. Nolan, a lot of people probably don't know, Mike Nolan, for over 30 years, donated his time, free of charge, for City Railroad, for any type of, anything they needed legally. He did it for nothing. He donated the lumber for the, for the actual railroad station you see today, Mr. Nolan. So these are, that's one thing we started on. Then I was contacted back in the late 70s by Barrett Stewart, Viv Warren, and Arlene Powell, Sue Powell's mother, who worked for Barrett Stewart for many years. And they asked me to, they wanted to, and they, they were talking about this new thing with this Barrett Foundation. I didn't really, I knew a little bit about it, but I wasn't sure how it worked. I didn't understand, you know, once he, you know, put this money into some type of, uh, an escrow, and it could be interest spent, I wasn't sure any of that was, what it was about. So I went out and, and I, I, I went down to Mayville, Kentucky, to call, it was Main Street. And they just started their project, they had the same problem we had. The light poles were starting to bend in, they had wires all over the downtown. They had curbs that were terrible, they had sidewalks that were terrible. They had, uh, street lights that were terrible. And they came to this town, and we got them hired, they went around, they took pictures of every building around the square from the north to the south of Woodson Street and Columbus Street. And then they, they come in, and we had maybe 25 of the builders showing each, each building what it was and what it could be. A lot of it had to do with painting and fixing up, making sure that, you know, they always said, every so often, somebody's going to paint something, you sure don't want them to paint the building downtown Nelsonville painting. I remember he told me that. So they did the different colorations, how you see the buildings today. So we started that project. And we got myself, Clinton Critchfield was a contractor at the time, he was our service director at one time. And there were Dave Fredericks, there was the Mauer Boys, Selena McFadden, Mr. Nolan's home. We collected 13,000 star bricks, 13,000, to do these sidewalks and so on. And it was really, it was interesting. I even had people pull up one time at grandfather's store, and the lady said, I've got some bricks for you, Mr. Brooks. I went out, and she had two. You know what? I took them. I took them, and I put them in the store. We would have those ready, and we started that whole project. We did the lights, when the lights came in, they were, they had some type of a coating on them. We painted those lights in the old Tarzan building at night, all of them. Doug Juniper actually wired for free. This was all free. And we started that. And then we got Jim Edwards. And Jim took, we used to have all those different wires running around the square. And we brought them down, we put them under the road, and brought them up in the middle squares, you know, today, to take care of the lighting in the interior. They took care of the fountain, and so on and so forth. So that was my contribution to that whole deal. And it was a long time, but I'd go, and they would write the check. It would come, you know, through the city like it does today. And then we would pay, you know, the people for the lights and for so on and all the latest. But we did all that. Then I was sitting one day with Dave Fredericks, and Dave said, you know, the old Sahai Station, the city right across the building, the street from, um, our opera house. He said, it's just falling down, we can't get anybody, we can't buy it. We want to buy it, it looks terrible. I said, it does. And I said, he said, I can't get anybody to call me back. I said, well, let me see what I can do. So I get ahold of, of, of the CEO in Dayton, Ohio, who was over this particular district. And I wrote him a letter, and I said, look, I'm on this foundation, the beautiful, beautification of Nelsonville. And I'm just telling you, people in town... And I'm just telling you, people in town, they're gonna get the Columbus papers down here, they're gonna get people to take pictures of this, and it looks like a mess. And they're gonna drag you all through the mud. I said, I don't want that. I drove up, again, on my own dime, I wrote him the check, I'm on personal account for twenty-seven thousand dollars. I came back, and David and Viv said, hey, uh, that's a little too much, that we don't, we don't wanna do it that way. I said, wait, but you told me to get it bought. Never kidding, and they paid me back to the Barrett Foundation. So, you know, I'm just giving you a few things, you know, how we got here. And, and could I be good for this position? I think I could, I could do a great job. I love this city. I love the people in the city, and I believe in the city. But I'm not gonna let the city go down. You know, we worked hard. My dad was on city council for over thirty years. His, his name is on the old sewer plant today, and once they tear that down, hopefully we can get that picture applied and so on. So I think I'm the best man for this job, for this, uh, you know, six months, you know. Now, to clear a couple things. I don't live, I, I do not live in Florida. I have a condo there, but I don't live there. I go, and hell, I go to Buckeye Lake too, because I've been playing there for thirty-two years, but I don't live there. So I don't want anybody to think, you know, that's my res- now, Florida should be, I save myself a lot of money, but I'm not gonna do that. So, um, and talking about Hocking College, I'm on board at Hocking College. I realize I have a disdain if something come across this, um, in the city council. The only thing that's come recently was the ballpark down here, that they talked about maybe leasing at that time. But that didn't go through, which I still think was a little different. Because saving yourself twelve thousand dollars to have a Hocking college, you left the grass. You have one game a year, the old, old seven, one a year. They didn't want Hocking to use it. And in another ten years, those old settlers will all be gone. So you left that grass for the rest of your life. So, that's, you know, that made no sense. But they're building their own, so don't worry about that. They're gonna build their own, they're gonna go forward. Been on that board for eight years. So that's my resume that I have to take this job. Who's got questions?
I've got one.
Yes.
Uh, Chief Tims at one time had applied for a spot on council. And she had to give up that appointment because of the public contracts between the two organizations. Have you checked into that?
Have I?
Yes.
As long as I'm staying, just being on this, on, 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 on the Nelsonville Council, I, I don't work for, I don't get paid by Hocking College. So I see no conflict there at all.
Okay.
She was the police chief, and they have a mutual agreement, so that's why there was a difference.
Do you have anything in your past, sir?
I started, matter of fact, I started the Waybridge Chute Company in nineteen sixty-six. And I am, yeah.
Are you associated with them on the board?
No, ma'am.
And would you, what is your position?
Right now, I'm, uh, I'm over all of the obsolete materials and obsolete footwear that we get rid of today. So when we, when we close out a line of shoes or boots or so on, I sell those off to discounters.
If something came up that dealt with rocky boots and you were on council?
I abstain from anything. Sure, I would, you know, I know that. The more I, you know, I wouldn't, uh, I just would abstain, abstain. A friend of mine, just to give you a little background, a friend of mine's on the board, Hocking College, is doing a project in New Lex. And he's had to abstain because the property's actually owed by Hocking. So I, I do understand.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I'll ask the same question. Do you think compromising is a strength or a weakness? I've compromised my whole life. And I think it's the only way to go. But I'm telling you, sitting right here, I'm here for the betterment of this community. I have no personal gain. I got nothing in this other than I want this town to flourish. Right now, we don't look that good on paper. I can tell as an outsider. I have spent thirty-two years in Buckeye Lake. I walk, and I constantly get this question. What the hell's going on with your town down there? What's going on? You guys wanna wake your door? They're, they're right, they're right. This gentleman shouldn't be running this town. He should be running the police department. I said it before, I said it three or four weeks ago. You got this twenty-two million dollar sewer plant you're putting in down there? What, you have to run him down after he's already wrecked somebody? Say, hey, did you hit a change order? Can I show this to you? We look stupid. We need to get a city manager. This gentleman back here promotes this town like I've never seen him promote it. He brings people in this town. They spend money in this town. He makes a good, when you talk to him, he makes a good appearance. That's what we have to have. We're just sitting here, and we're the laughing stock of Southern Ohio. There's nobody running it. No one. He works. He got a full-time job. Tony does. I mean, what, you run him down after he's working on somebody's refrigerator? You might, they're gonna look at this, there's a change order. I mean, seriously. Everything else runs very well here, I think. I said it with Harry, I've said it with Jason, I've said it with his police department. The buck stops right here. And I'm sorry, but you know, after two times, and then the third time, you come back on council? I, 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 I can't go that. I, I, I don't want to hear it. If I'm gonna be in here, I'll be here for those six months. I'll tell you right off the bat, I'm not running like Yanni is again. This is it.
I'm up for it.
I'm, 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 I'll tell you, I'm done. But I would tell you, you won't find anybody in this community to think, and I'll tell you about the park too, real quick. Now you've mentioned, I'm mentioning this, the Greyhound Park. I am very proud of that, very proud. And I'll tell you what got me there. I'll tell you. I went down when they had the wreck, we lost that officer. My mother-in-law and father-in-law was in that particular wreck. And I was down there, and I saw the police department, and I knew they had another run, someone come down, there's a disturbance up in one of those houses, the white ones, where they're always having problems. They're always having some type of fight up there, and the people were just, nothing but trice living there. You got a twenty-two million dollar high school that you put in. It's beautiful. And you had that piece of shit right across from you. And that's what it was. And they come up, and they said, they said that, um, we gotta go down there, but we have this officer and so on. And, and Hocking College pulls up, and Hocking College said, we'll take care of it. We'll take care of it. You stay here, we'll run down there. And I saw them down, and I thought to myself, I said to my wife, we gotta do something. That, that's a crime. We gotta get that bought, and make it into some type of park or something. That was my whole motivation in that. And the people in Nelsonville, a lot of great people put in, and they bought what we, what you know as the Smithy's Golf Stakes. They bought it for Mr. Hartley, and he gave us a great price. And the checks were made out to Mr. Hartley, not to me. And once they all gathered up in Nelsonville Home and Saving, they sent them to Mr. Hartley. Is that true? Okay. My wife and I, we spent the other twenty-five thousand dollars. And I'll tell you something else. I wasn't gonna do this, but you know what? I got the damn keys. Do you want these for two? They're two for the shit sacks for the dogs. You know what? Forty-two dollars and fifty cents to buy those are refillable. So don't tell me I don't care about this thing.
You have any questions?
They're scared too.
He got more.
Discussion, I guess I'd vote for it. I nominate Corey Taylor for the position.
I nominate Stuart Brooks for the position.
Do we have a second? All right, do we have any more? Okay. All right, so we have a second moment. All right, this is for Corey Taylor. Call it on, ma'am.
Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Derek Sherman?
No. Yes.
No.
All right, for Mr. Brooks.
Tingle?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Uh, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Booth?
No.
Missoni?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
No.
I'm a liberal. Ridiculous.
So I guess we can assume you'll be appointed Corey Taylor next week? Guessing nothing. Okay.
So ridiculous.
All right, citizens' comments. Three minutes per person, must be a resident of the community, and please state your name and your address.
Lynn Bishop Kennedy Brooke Bullard. I was here to the last meeting that we had two weeks ago, along with everybody else here, and we were here for one reason. To have, uh, Mr. Rill back in his seat as city manager. Uh, why he, he had come back twenty-four hours before twenty-four hours to, uh, want his seat back. Other people have done this, I think, uh, maybe Mr. Coleman at one point, somebody. This has happened before. Okay, so, as, I think that's why everybody's here today. And this is a citizens of the town that you serve. And, uh, I hope that this can be settled because of Chip here and Mr. Toy's name. Mr. Toy's not here. Last time you were.
I know, I've been younger.
Okay. But anyways, he's here tonight, so I think if we can get this settled in front of all the citizens of Nelsonville that would like to do that tonight, and nobody jump up and leave like Mr. Dunphy did last time, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, we want it, uh, settled. We want Mr. Rill. Did I pronounce your name right? That's a funny one to pronounce.
Rill.
I'll call him Bernie. Anyways, and that's why we're here tonight. And you know, Stuart, thank you so much for the railroad.
Oh, you're welcome.
You know, it did sit there for a long time before anything happened. People kind of forgot about it, you know? But anyways, people love to come here. I can tell you that for a fact, right? That, that railroad.
Yeah.
And my sister, uh, you know her well, and they come in there, and they keep coming back to, and she serves in peace, and they love her. So, and they just love to come right to railroad. You know, she said, my goodness, it goes up the backyards of people, and they just go to you. No, they don't care. They love it. So we thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So much. And I just hope that we can get this settled tonight. I probably had a lot on my rope down here. But just whatever happened with him that night, it was a bad situation. I've probably done it myself. But anyways, within twenty-four hours, he said, no, I want there. These people wanting there. So please just have that settled tonight. Tonight.
I got it. Stuart Brooks, 123 East Columbus Street. No, Bill. But I don't understand this why we would, back when we had Tracy Galway here. And she was, Tony, are you, you're related to Keller Blackburn, correct? Or by?
By marriage.
Marriage, okay. Tracy was brought in here by Keller to be brought to city council. That's her statement?
It was recommended by her?
By him, yeah. He lives in Athens, Keller, not Nelsonville. He doesn't run Nelsonville. So we bring her in here, and we have big conflict with her allowing a trailer just to be brought into this town. You should ask somebody before she made that particular decision. I don't see why she would benefit us when this gentleman has a huge business in this community.
Amen.
Yes.
And the other problem we have in this town is we have a ton of Bud Reynolds in this town. How many Reynolds do you have today?
Uh, Bud?
Oh, okay. Give me a rundown of how many you have.
Let's, let's, let's keep going, let's note.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out here, what, you know, when I say I have no personal reason, you know, we're sitting with what, whatever he has, whatever you have, or Nick, what Blackburns have, this whole town. We become a town of just, you want people to move in here? You want people to come to this town? Who would do that? Who would come here to live? Answer me that. I don't know. So it, you know, it seems to me that we have some conflict here. Very much so. So I'd ask this council, as going forward, we should look into that. Because I don't think that's working for this community at all. And you can't make me believe that one of those are in your area, in your neighborhood, that it doesn't reduce the property value that you have. Ask that question. It's, it's really bad. You're going downhill.
Yep. Because that ends around like four people.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to make a?
I got a quick one.
Go ahead. Can't stop you, Tony.
Mine, mine's an easy one, guys. Neil Summers had a, a meeting planned for this Saturday at the library. It is still on. It's from ten until noon. Refreshments will be served. And anybody is welcome to come there and say things that you would like to see happen in months ago. And anybody can come. The last time we had a meeting, there were like six people there. They were really first, but you know what? Honest to goodness, everybody listened to everybody, and they got along. That's awesome.
Wow. Refreshing.
Anyone else? You're up. Thank you. I'm Bernie Roll. Are you a citizen of the community? Are you residential?
Citizen, we've got other people telling me, make public comments. No, I'm not a citizen. People who are not citizens make public comments. What are you worried about, Tony?
I'm not worried about anything.
Business and organizational problems are next.
So I've got a few talking points. I, I wasn't sure which direction I wanted to go tonight with my comments, and clearly, we have a council that's divided. I mean, they, they show it all the time. I, you know, I witnessed it, you know, as the city manager, uh, when I, when I was, uh, in that role. And, you know, it's probably gonna go in the direction that Tony wants it to go. So I guess the question I have is, why? Why was nothing done except my rescinding of my resignation? Why was a council meeting not called immediately after getting the legal opinion from Bob Toy to make a decision on his legal opinion? It is a legal opinion that councils can talk about and then make a decision on it. It doesn't have to be acted on, just like the legal. just like the legal opinion that I provided to Bob Toy didn't have to be acted on. Apparently wasn't relevant. You know, it was, it was clear, you know, from the executive council meeting that I was in, where I need your resign because of the environment that was created by a particular person through the meeting was supposed to be about. You know, he called me out in my office that I was being manipulated by certain council members. And that a majority of the council felt the same way. Well, at the time, you know, it was Dan, Neil, Glenda and Nancy. They never indicated to me that they felt I was being manipulated. I told Tony when he came into my office that when I first took the position that I wasn't going to be manipulated. I wasn't going to have somebody force an agenda on me. You know, we worked together as a team. And there were numerous times that I tried to make sure that we maintained order in those executive sessions back there because of a certain person's outburst. I mean, he's gone after and attacked other people on council as well. So does any, any council member have a say? Because apparently, when the Tony made the call to get a legal opinion.
Bernie, your three minutes are up.
No, I'm going to finish this. You know, there, there was no, there was no discussion over what was going to be taking place. The, the city position.
Point of order. Each citizen gets three minutes, Mr. Roll. Your three minutes are up. You want to be removed. Does anybody have three minutes? Situation has every turn.
Alright.
I'll take my three minutes.
Three minutes. Well, you don't have three minutes. He has three minutes. Anybody else wants to come up? They have three minutes. You're not special, Mr. Roll. You're not a citizen. We let you speak. You have three minutes. You're done. Sit down.
You are a business man. Finish it in the comments.
So you don't have to disturb a public meeting. Please do that, sir. Thank you.
He is not disturbing.
Please, sit down. Your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Why, why was it that Scott Frank, September, October 2nd
Okay.
resigned in writing and no action was taken with regards to his
Mr. Roll, I'm going to read you two nine seventeen point one-two, Disturbing a Lawful Meeting. You do any act which obstructs or interferes with a new conduct of such meeting. Every citizen, you're not a citizen, we gave you three minutes. Now you can sit down. If you have somebody else to say something, you can do it. Otherwise, you may subject yourself to a criminal charge of disturbing a lawful meeting. Do you understand that?
Anybody want to read this?
Thank you. You go have your manifesto. Pass it out. Thank you. Next person. My three minutes. Any person.
When I want to bring Columbus, we can start the timer now. Does the council not have any say in any of this? Is, is this just Duffy's decision? At the end of the day, that seems to be a pass.
Yeah, it is.
Regardless of what the community wants.
Yep.
The fact that y'all were elected by the community to what? To govern for them, to make their wishes come true, to bring the town up from where it is now. Y'all have not done that because what? You're more concerned with making whatever happiness you want for yourself and your friends instead of the town. The council's only, only concern should ever be, how can we make Nelsonville a better place to live? How can we bring families back into this community so that we can rebuild it? It should not be, "Well, I gotta get my friends on council so that I can get what I want."
That's what we got.
Because that is exactly what's happening. As I said. Counsel, yes, compromise is good, but not when you're compromising down. When you're compromising so that the person that has no interest in helping Nelsonville get what they want, that's not compromise. That's bowing down. That's cowardice.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And at some point, it has to stop. It has gone on long enough. It took me one month to be here to see it. I know everyone here sees it.
Yep.
I don't understand. And the fact that you don't let this man speak, you, he's the only one that you timed. And why was that? Because you weren't saying what he was going to say. We don't know, Duffy. There was another person that was, that resigned, was a friend. Scott Frank. He resigned. He actually wrote a resignation letter and turned it in. Was it accepted?
No.
Because you didn't want him to leave.
I know, buddy.
Because he was doing a great job taking funds and services from the city for his own benefit.
Yes.
So my God, that was, that was so damn great.
That was fine. That was fine.
So that you do not let a man with integrity lead this town is amazing to me.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yes.
Amazing. And you can sit there and smile and smirk. That's great, you know? We, as a community, will do what we have to do to make sure that this town will go forward. Forward in the right way. Forward to make Nelsonville better, not worse. That's all I have to say. Anybody else want to read?
Welcome to HUD Bill.
Business organizational comments. The one?
Tim Blackburn, one thousand five hundred and twenty-nine. I was a HUD resident. I come here because I've been here back for four months. I've been gone for one year. And I've had numerous things stolen. My house broken into, and it's not always, you know, the, I live around on Blackman Sunburne, so he, he oversees everything. And I come in here and it's like one of the high school groups. There's so many different groups divided. Sad batch of watch this, watch this meeting.
It is. Yeah. It is. Right.
I mean, I care about Nelsonville a lot. I come here.
Four people, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost good for everybody.
You're right.
I mean, I'm a great guy. Everybody in here has good qualities. It's just everybody's butt heads. Every kibble's a bit, little thing. I mean, you're, you're being bugging as shit, I mean, for no reason. However, I'm just saying, you know, I want, I want things to change for everybody that comes in. I mean, we ain't going to be perfect. You know, if you can laugh, cry, smile, whatever, and you might be pissed about everything, but and, and when the day ends, you know, we're all on the same page and nothing's going to ever get done. You know, what we need to do is actually sit down, use our brains together and set a button away. And we'll get some more things done and adopted. I mean, it's not, it's not that hard to sit down and say, hey, you know, what is it that we can do to make things better? And then say, I'm going to take ideas. I mean, they give you ideas. Just listen. I don't have a real deal, what's what, but obviously, you already say divided. Whine between some people who need to be on the council, maybe you can get the hell out of council.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You got my vote. Five thirty, do the halftime breach one like I talked about, you know?
What are we doing on Monday?
Yeah. Monday work. Monday work.
Every committee?
Every committee.
Make one night that way. It's not all of them placed. We start at five thirty. Starting at five thirty.
Okay.
Finance is always the last, so we can do parking rates at five thirty.
Six would be Towns and Mid Street. Six thirty would be Should share. Fix the fire. We didn't know the share. Utilities.
And they ever have. They're not following up.
They don't, they don't follow, they don't follow what they want.
Alright. Alright, Department up there? Call code. Yeah, call the state. We have code.
Yeah.
Code's not here. Is Bill here? Yeah. You got to get the Attorney General back. So for the Book of May, we had four hundred and one calls for service. We conducted forty-two traffic stops, issued nineteen citations to three accident reports, made ten criminal arrests and made sixteen warrant arrests. We're still short four officers. Obviously, we're doing someone tomorrow, so we still position for in the future. We had our civil service test a week or two ago. Had five people test, three, I'm sorry, six people test, four passed. Of those two already employed, it's going to pass their civil service test and re-employed. The person I'm interviewing tomorrow's already passed their civil service test, so probably will do well in interview and can pass a medical exam for insurance purposes and stuff. And we'll settle down with three officers. That's all I got for room. Any questions for Chief Collins? Alright, we need to amend the agenda to add ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-three and thirty-eight dash twenty-three. I got a second. Second now. Yes.
Sherman?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-three. Need someone to introduce it, please? I will. Thank you.
An ordinance approving wastewater treatment plant phase two, change order seven for Nelsonville Regional Collection System project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a phase two wastewater treatment plant contract, whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended in order to complete the contract. Whereas this will be change order seven for this project. Whereas the purpose of the change order is to cover the costs of various changes, including an electrical breaker change, installation of additional ballers to protect one end from flood building and to remove dead or dying trees that could fall on the new structure or fence in the future. Whereas there is sufficient contingency grant money available to fund this change order. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by twenty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and sixty cents and is summarized as attached in exhibit one. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approved change order seven for the phase two wastewater treatment plant contract as described in exhibit one attached here to and incorporated into this ordinance as if we win, we wit. Rewritten, written. The contract price will be increased by a sum of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-six. The change order is to cover the cost of various changes, including an electrical breaker change, installation of additional ballers to protect, protect one end from flood building and to remove dead or dying trees that could fall on the new structure or fence in the future. The additional cost is twenty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and sixty cents. Acting city manager Devon Coliver shall have the authority to enter into accept and or authorize the contract change order seven for phase two wastewater treatment plant contract as shown in exhibit A. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Advice Code seven thirty-one point three, Article four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city, an ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption. Willing acted by council, offer reading under suspension of rules, default date of June, December twenty-three.
Okay. Any council discussion on said matter? Mr. Betts, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm just going to answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions? Okay. Are any motions suspended?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Missona?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Tingle? Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Missona?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Tingle, yes. You're Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Yes.
Alright. Ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-three. Need someone to introduce it, please? I'll introduce it. Thank you.
An ordinance approving change order two for Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project. Whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended in order to complete the contract. Whereas the purpose of this change order is to resolve various utility conflicts preventing the completion of the work. Whereas the change order also includes replacing the failed water line under Munro Street along Monroe that was leaking into the sewer system. Whereas this will be change order two for this project. Whereas the change will increase the contract price by ninety-three thousand, sixty-nine dollars, ninety-six cents and is summarized as attached in exhibit one. Whereas funds will be drawn from the contingency portion of the project in which there is enough to cover the increased price. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves change order two for the Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project contract as described in exhibit one, attached here to and incorporated into this ordinance as if we written, fully within. The contract price will be increased by a sum of ninety-three thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. The change includes the following. Move and replace six inch existing water line running through unknown existing sanitary manhole under an existing storm tunnel, water tunnel totaling sixty-three thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Monroe Street relocation of existing water line due to elevation conflict with the new storm sewer totaling nine thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Raise the elevation height of the new generator pad totaling five thousand, eight hundred six dollars and eighty-one cents. Relocate the water on Monroe and Myers Street due to elevation conflict totaling ten thousand, three hundred ten dollars and ninety cents. Cast in place a new catch basin and accommodate three new indoor sewers totaling four thousand, four hundred, I'm sorry, four thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars acting city manager Devon Coliver shall have the authority to enter into accept and or authorize the change contract change order two for Nelsonville Regional Collection Phase Three Sewer Project contract as shown in exhibit one. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption. Willing acted by council, offer reading under suspension of rules on the top date of change, two thousand twenty-three.
Any council discussion on said matter?
Mr. Betts, the only one I have an issue with is the raising of the new generator pad due to elevations. Was the elevation correct on the, with the print?
We had to raise it higher than the flood plain. We didn't have that high and realized a big problem about that.
I mean, isn't that part of the first command, though? Isn't the correct elevation on that?
Looking back, it might have had the elevation higher.
Not near the flood plain, though?
So we put it at the same height as the existing station over there. So that's how we're going to have a position. Thought it'd be safer to get it up above potential flood.
Probably be safer to get it up above, that's the part.
When this is down, will Monroe Street be repaid?
Yes. The portion is disturbed by the project.
Okay.
And then the, the last portion from Fayette to Columbus, the city's favor, the file, the papers are there.
Okay. If I may add, just, uh, the big portion of that, we found a leak in water line under Canal Street. So we asked the contractor for the, for the price, uh, to do that work, so we're gonna get a, a water line installed from the north side of Canal, along Monroe all the way to Myers, so, uh, that'll be a good, uh, benefit of this project as well. EPA's arguing that thing.
Size line, exactly.
Pardon me.
Size line?
Uh, six inch, six inch.
That's the $63,000.
Yes. It was leaking pretty badly. Any other questions?
Yeah. I have some general questions, I'm not with the ordinance, so I'll wait till after class goes.
Alright, um, any more council discussion on said ordinance? Motion to suspend? So, okay.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
You can go.
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonne?
Yes. Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Stengel?
Yeah.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Sonne?
Yes.
Mr. Tenet?
Yes.
Alright.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
From Mr. Betts?
Yes.
So, um, are there scheduled rate increases on this sewer for 23, 24, 25?
Yes, um, I don't have specifics, I cannot give you specifics, I can tell you the history of what we recommend for rate increases. Uh, Curtis Strickland, Ohio R cap, uh, recommended the Community Assistance Program. Uh, at the beginning of this project, worked with, uh, Mr. Sappington, and, uh, city, city council to, uh, recommend rate increases, uh, we'll cover the project, they did projections of probably, started all this. And council's been enacting some of those rates, I know, years, uh, since the start. Again, I don't know the exact figures, but they looked at percentages, I would have to follow up with specific information on that.
Okay, um, at this point, what is the full amount of investment of the property? What is the cost of the plant?
The plant itself, so there's, I wanna be clear, there's three different phases, potentially going before. Um, the plant itself, construction was 16 and a half billion, that's the base bid. Get in engineering and, uh, all the other miscellaneous costs, it's roughly $18 million. Uh, but there was other phases, the first phase, well, my memory here is bear with me.
Sure.
Um, it was probably three, two, $6 million in Phase 1, and we're underway in Phase 3 right now, which is another, uh, $4 million, so. Uh, yeah, all that up, it's in the high twenties, $4 million. And I would say, uh, again, just rough, rough estimate, that's probably 60 plus percent funded every year.
Is the Ford Street project still on, the water line go in the backside?
It is, so we had bid openings, um, um, back in late April, Saturday, pardon me, it was good Friday. Um, I recommended to council a meeting or two about tentative award to D.D. Weber. Upon the, uh, funding becoming, uh, finalized, uh, it's just a process, it was there, it's just, uh, uh, formalities. And that just happens, we're actually, uh, signing contracts tomorrow. He wants to get started, so to give you an idea, um, I would, what did he say, July 1st, he wants to be started? Somewhere in July, we can see construction starting.
Will the street be completely closed, or will it be one lane, or where's the water line running?
On which one?
Ford Street.
Ford Street is up the right side, less through the way, and we'll have one lane of traffic. Where it's gonna get interesting is where you get on Pleasant Avenue, it's a narrow lane.
Is it gonna follow Pleasant, you?
Follows Pleasant.
So that'll be closed?
Yeah. Yeah, but we get, uh, we always have them get citizens access, or residents access to those, I guess. There'll be any means, uh, that'll help.
Okay.
Um, do you have a projected completion date for the treatment plant?
Yes, we, uh, we're past due, the, um, water control center we were waiting on, the big electrical components, I suppose, about a couple of months, arrived today. And wiring it in, it's gonna take them a couple of weeks to get it completed wired, there's so much electric, well, now that it powers the tire. Um, there's a good month and a half startups, a little various equipment we have to get vendors in for each piece of the equipment, the stream, uh, the treatment tank, the clarifiers, the V system, all those, uh, pieces, pieces of equipment require, uh, factory training startup, and in training personnel. Bottom line, with all that taking place, we're hoping in August to have sewage flowing to the new plant, uh, to complete the startup. And, uh, hopefully, September 1st, we're, we're treating sewage down there. Um, from there, it's a matter of working out bugs, there will be bugs, you know, get everything started up, a $16 million facility. Um, I can also tell you that the existing sewer plant, they've got a demolition subcontractor, uh, on board for that, they say 10 days, they'll, they'll have it down, so. With all that said, um, I'd like to say by Halloween, we'll be wrapping it up completely when we close off Big Board.
Okay.
Bunch of stuff.
One other question, I'm assuming that you'll be able to take samples to, um, test for COVID and other issues?
Oh yeah, you certainly can, um, that's not.
I don't know how complicated that was, you just, what, what the process is.
Yeah, so the, the operators would do, they'd do grab samples on the F line, and then probably the M line, actually, there's automatic samplers for the M line. They're required by the EPA to sample for certain parameters, suspend solids, uh, C, CBOD, things like that, uh. In their grab samples, it'd be easy to, uh, send it off to certain places and would, uh, uh, do the analysis, would that be the correct plan of that? So I know, with that said, I know a lot of universities, uh, have been doing that since 2020, so. Uh, cities interested in that, that's probably where I reach out to universities about that.
Thank you. Alright, any more questions?
Good the order, Mr. Coleman, I'll see you man do for me.
Yeah, so, I attended the Athens County Regional Planning Commission last week. I learned that there's gonna be some more state money coming for, you know, demolishing some houses through the landline. So I'll keep an eye on that. I've spoken with Goodwill, we're gonna set up a couple of donation bins here in town. And there'll be one set up here at City Hall, and then another at Polly Field. Which is gonna be kind of a trial run for now, to see how it goes, and make sure everyone, you know, keeps them clean. And doesn't, you know, they, um, they pretty well assure me that they keep them clean, and that's not an issue, when people need trash around them, they, they pay pretty well, so. See how that goes?
With all that happening, can I add to that?
Yeah.
The, the guy who's overseeing it, comes through Nelsonville once a day, and he's gonna stop and check both of them, make sure there's nothing outside of them. And if somebody would have, they, they redesigned these boxes, and they're six foot though.
Yeah.
And the hole is at the top, it's to make sure that people can't climb into them, the way they're designed, you can't, it, the, if animals or something try to get in, they can't, there's no way for them to get into them, so, just have that on top.
I also spoke to the, uh, the Athens Talking Transit, we're gonna try and set up some actual bus signs, for where stops are gonna be added in town. I don't know if anyone's familiar with it, but currently, if anyone wanting to ride the bus, just kind of walks down Canal Street along their route and waves at the bus driver to get them to stop. So, we're gonna work on making some actual bus stops. Good the order, Mr. Coleman, I don't have anything.
I hope after hearing everything that was said today, that when the decision is made for the new council member, we take it all into, into consideration.
Amen, that's right.
And thank you to all of you for showing up tonight and supporting council. We need all the support we can get.
I get, we understand that.
And a bottle of wine, no.
Okay.
Good old boys.
Yeah. My, my son is applying for the FBI again. He is a air force in security forces right now, so, that's the only thing I got going on.
Mr. Sherman?
So, I'd like to ask assistance to, you know, let you get involved, you need to stay involved, because nothing's gonna change unless you don't get involved.
Would have to go through the state.
Contact the state if you need to.
Yeah.
If nobody can respond to you here, then contact the state.
Well, we still have no city manager, can we, can you contact the state about that?
Yeah, contact the state about that.
I doubt for sure, the state needs to come in, have, uh, something done about that.
Mr. Booth?
Uh, in regards to the bus stops, uh, I would like to give full credit to Neil Summers, who was on the council prior. He was the one that actually went and set that all up, so it came after the fact. Just wanted to make sure everyone does.
Thank you. Motion to go in executive session for, uh, 121-22 for sub personnel legal matters.
So, okay.
Uh, Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Sherman?
No, I am not going in to kill them.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Good for Jerry.
A show of hands, how many councilmen?
Mary Ann, ma'am, you're out of order.
Oh.
Did you get a second? Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion, let's vote on it.
Sherman?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.